It is now nine o'clock. Welcome, everyone, to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Today is Thursday, January the 10th, 2019. Here again it's 9:00 a.m. Chairman Parker is out of town attending a class representing the county, so I'm filling in for him today. At this time, as we always do, we'll start our meeting with prayer. Today we have Associate Pastor Justin Gambrell from Pine Terrace Baptist Church with us, and after the prayer, I ask Commissioner Lynch to lead us in the pledge. Pastor, if you'll come forward, please stand.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this great place. We thank you for Santa Rosa County. We thank you, Lord, for the men and women and children that live in this place. Lord, we thank you that we live in a place that, Lord, that is in this great state, in this great country. Lord, as we come today, Lord, I just praise you for the county commissioners. I praise you, Lord, for the servants that serve this community in this county so great. And, Lord, I pray for them, Lord, knowing that they have to make tough decisions, knowing, Lord, that there are tough times, Lord, knowing that there are also good times. And, Lord, I pray for them, and I pray, Lord, for our county. Lord, as Santa Rosa County is a great county to live in, Lord, I am thankful that I am able to live here with my family. And, Lord, I pray that as we come together as a community and as a county, Lord, I pray that we would glorify you in all the things that we do. Or we are blessed to be a part of this great county. Lord, I pray that you be with the public servants, Lord, everybody that serves for a purpose to make this county better. And, Lord, I pray that you would be the light in this county. Help us, Lord, to work together. Help us, Lord, to love one another. Help us, Lord, to live to glorify you. Lord, I thank you so much for this time, and I pray over this meeting today, Lord, that it would glorify you in all ways. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. This time, we will approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2018 special meeting, P. Ridge Connector Interviews, and the December 13th, 2018 regular meeting, and the December 13th, 2018 special meeting. Any comments from the board? We will approve those minutes as presented. They are approved. Today, we will go over our agenda. We'll start with Commissioner Peach. Any changes?
No changes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, just a few comments. Wherever you'd like to place them about the grant applications we turned in or were successful on. Just get that on record.
You want to make comments on that?
Yes, sir.
We will add that to the end of the meeting at Administrative Committee, number three.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Staff, Mr. County Administrator?
No changes, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
No changes.
No changes. To the right, Mr. Spencer, you have anything to say?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. We will approve the agenda as presented. It is approved. Most of y'all know that the commissioners now have what we call a consent agenda. On Monday, we discussed several items. So at this time, we're going to ask, is there any comments on the consent agenda? Jerry, name and address, please.
Good morning. Jerry Cooley, 6049 R.A.S. Way. I'd like to first welcome, I'm sure you've been welcomed several times, but our new Commissioner Dave Peach, welcome. Item number six, sale of the Whittle Building. Can, could someone go over how we're going to market that, how we're gonna, how that's going to be handled?
Dan? Yes, sir. What we're asking the board to do is to declare the Whittle Building surplus. We've gotten all the materials that were stored in there out and relocated into a separate facility. Anything usable, we feel like we've got out. So the board's decision today is to declare it surplus. The state statute covers three different options as far as disposal of surplus property. We have used in the past the clerk's auction service for other properties. That is one option. What the board discussed primarily on Monday was just directly advertising and taking and receiving bids from the public. There's also another option to dispose of the property to another government agency. So any of those are available. The decision the board will make today is to declare it surplus, and then we're going to look at those options as to which is best. I think the board leaned towards direct advertising and taking bids.
All right. In the current FDOT possibility of fore laning, would that affect the Whittle Building? I can't remember. Was it, would that be something the state would be interested in?
Yes, sir. That's why I mentioned, you know, sell to another government agency or, you know, transfer to another government agency. The FDOT may certainly be interested, and that's something we will look into.
So the roadbed potentially on the fore laning would take that property?
I'm not certain. We intend to reach out to FDOT to ask that question.
Okay. If it's not going to be affected by the potential fore laning, I think it's, you know, I just want to make sure that the taxpayers get the most bang for their buck in that. I understand the building needs some repairs. We all understand that. We, you know, we haven't put a lot of money in it. However, it is in a historic downtown, and I think it's part of the history of Santa Rosa County, and I want to make sure that it gets marketed to the widest audience possible. Thank you. Number six, not in the business, didn't go to school for it. That'll be the Whiting Aviation Consultant Contract. I need help understanding why it costs a million dollars for, to do engineering services on 235 acres. A million dollars. Can you outline what we're getting for a million dollars for me, please?
I would defer to Mr. Blaylock and the Engineering Department on the specifics, but this is to complete design and construction plans for Whiting Aviation Park.
A million dollars. Did we, did we put that out for bid?
Yes, sir.
You?
For professional services, you don't put it out for bid. You request qualifications, and we received, I think, about eight responses, Roger? Six or eight responses. Those were ranked and presented to the board, and they, Moffett and Nickel was the highest-ranked firm. The board approved that ranking and approved negotiation with that firm for this contract.
A million dollars. Let that soak in for a moment. To the citizens at Whiting, I just can't believe it. It cost a million dollars to set up where a road's going to go, where a holding pond's going to go, where electrical and services are going to go. A million dollars. Let that soak in a little bit. Awful high. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Any, any other comments on the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am. Derek, come forward, please.
Can you tell me if the land development code is on the consent agenda? Is that part of the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, then, I do have something to say. I was here on Monday for the committee meeting, and I proposed a number of land development code amendments. And, like I said on Monday, much of the land development code is adequate. It just needs some enforcement. But I do feel very strongly that we must do away with the exemption for subdivision development under 7.01.06 and implement a grace program like the one in Leon County. I shared with Sean Ward all the paperwork that I had on that, and he's going to be looking that over. But if you adopt these amendments, you know, they really won't make a difference without enforcement and accountability, because too much damage is being done in the county for the developers to continue with the status quo. People are very angry and upset, and I get all kinds of emails from people about some of the development that's going on. I really believe that we need to initiate impact fees and bonds, and where there's been violations and damage done, there should be mitigation enforced. The developers could be made to post a bond similar to what's required under Article 4G, and it covers 100% of any necessary repairs due to faulty engineering or workmanship, like undermining of roads, you know, stormwater runoff, damage, and things like that. And it's a bond that lasts 12 months. If nothing has happened in 12 months, then they get their bond money back. But it protects the citizens, and because a lot of times, people don't know that there's been something done wrong until after the fact, and the developers are already gone. But I believe that Santa Rosa County is missing out on a great opportunity, because if we initiate these changes, all of a sudden, there's a source of revenue to deal with problems after developers are gone. But I think it could have a great impact on our future. If you look at Seaside, at 30A, and these developers, a lot of them are familiar with Seaside. They developed part of Seaside, so they know how to do it right. The land is pretty densely developed, but they were, but it was highly restrictive in their codes and enforcement, and the developers had to work with and around nature. And look what happened. It's some of the most desirable land, and the property values have remained high and are climbing. So if you, if you do it that way, you know, I think it's a win-win for everybody. You know, it's really the secret sauce. You know, don't bulldoze it. Embrace it. You know, and we could end up with something as beautiful and desirable as what they have down on 30A and in many places in Santa Rosa County, but I'm specifically talking about South Santa Rosa and the Gulf Lowlands coastal habitat area. There's some beautiful places there, and they're being destroyed right now. And the reason that developers don't have any respect for our land and our communities is because we haven't made them respect it, you know? And so, anyway, I see the alternative, if we don't do anything, as a downward spiral in desirability. Property values are going to go down as stormwater displacement and deforestation and overdevelopment and traffic all take their toll. You know, it's our land that we love, that all of us love, that's going to suffer in the long run. So, and one last thing, if you really want to make a 30A, which we could do, and the people would love you for it, and your meetings would be much more pleasant, if you really want to do that, you really need to do a conservation district with some of that Gulf Lowlands habitat area. And I identified part of the land that there's undeveloped land between Nantahala on Soundside down to the zoo. And it's like the last of the undeveloped land. After that, you get all the little subdivisions leading all the way to Navarre. And so, all that's developed. So this is the last opportunity to do something like that. That's, I believe that that is part of the secret sauce, and I think that we could do great things in South Santa Rosa. And, you know, and one other thing, I hope that when you guys build the new courthouse, that you'll leave some trees in the parking lot, because people love to park under them. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And here again, the board's already agreed to review our land development code, and I know you've been talking with Sean. Just one comment about conservation easements. If we try to impose a conservation easement on land, we have to buy that land. So...
You know, that land has been in a trust for a really long time, and I don't know, nobody has approached that gentleman to see if he would like to leave a legacy like that. You know, 50 years later, we're walking around going, thank goodness for Bob Sykes, or we wouldn't have, you know, the lands, pristine lands on the beach anymore. This gentleman, you know, he may be very open to something like that. And I believe you guys have the power and the opportunity and, and the money, and he may, you know, be very reasonable about it and give it some serious thought. I think it's worth a try.
I will ask our county administrator to try to reach out to him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the consent agenda? We're going to have public forum at the end of the meeting. All right. Hearing none on the consent agenda, we will approve the consent agenda at this time without objection. It is approved. We will now go to the regular agenda. We have a couple of items. First is, we're going to discussion of approval to appoint Bill Lynn as District Three member of the Aviation Advisory Committee, and I'm going to move that approval without objection. Hearing none, it's approved. Bill, would you like to come forward and say a few words? Bill is a longtime resident of Santa Rosa County and loves our county.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for the opportunity, and I will, I appreciate. It's an honor to serve on this advisory committee, and I'll do my utmost for the benefit of the aviation community and the citizens of Santa Rosa County. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Looking forward to your serving. Here again, it's already approved. So we now will move to the second item on the regular agenda. That's the meeting list. Everybody has a copy of those meetings. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, we will approve those minutes, those meetings list as presented. They are approved. Next, we'll go to number three. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very happy to read an email that I received from Sheila Harris, Fitzgerald, I shouldn't say, about the applications that we put in for, and her office did quite well for Santa Rosa County. We were able to receive $250,000 for Baghdad, $250,000 for Benny Russell Park, and was it 200 for Benny Russell? And what?
250 for each.
Thought there were 250.
I think the city received 250 for Cartman's Park. I'm not certain of that. I just had read that in an email. But we received 200,000 for Baghdad and 200,000 for Benny Russell. Both grant applications were approved by the state.
So that's just, just something I wanted to put out, let everybody know that those were successful, and that's through the hard work of that department and those folks that work for Santa Rosa County to bring those state dollars to bear on our parks. So thank that, thank Sheila and her group very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. We already had another $200,000 grant approved for $5. Is that correct, Dan?
Yes, sir. And we have one.
Yes, sir. That's correct. We had that previously approved. Then we have a grant application pending for Swinson Park.
Thank you. Lot of, lot of, lot of money and a lot of good work by our staff. Thank you, Commissioner Cole. That was information only. Here again, there's no other items on the engineer's report, public service, public works, budget and financial. Any comments from the commissioners? All right. Hearing none, we now will go to public forum. Public forum is now open. Yes, sir. Come forward. Make sure you have your name and address and fill out a speakers form.
My name's Harry Godlove. I live at 4137 Sage Street. I presented a letter. I mailed a registered letter, same letter, to Mr. Sam Parker, and pictures of our flooding issues of our neighborhood. I, my house flooded in 2014, and I put a claim against the insurance company. They denied it, saying it was an act of God. Well, I got Stephen Foreman. He come out and cleaned the dishes for us. My problem immediately went away. And then, we are now presented with problems with storm drain runoff. And we have a ditch that runs perpendicular to our streets, which is Ironstone, I Live on Sage, and Cinnamon, these three streets. 25 residents live on these, these three streets. They have ditches there to runoff, but the county has no easement for them to maintain those ditches. And that ditch goes down to the power line, and same thing there. At the power line, these are privately-owned lots, and they, and the power company leases this right-of-way to run the power lines over. But these ditches go across the power lines, and we have no easement to maintain those ditches. Stephen Foreman does a wonderful job, sends a foreman out there, coordinates with the homeowner, sends a crew out and does what you ask, but his hands are tied because he has no easement on these other ditches to carry the water away. Well, we get two inches of rain, and everything's filled up, and everything starts backing up into the homes. We have at least five homes that are flooded every time we get two inches of rain. And poor Ironstone, they don't even have a ditch to carry it away at all. But we need, we need to take care of our neighborhoods, and we need to provide some kind of drainage to go to the bay. There's two big ponds down there in the woods that used to collect the water, but now the ditches have grown, leaves have went in, erosions come in and fill those ditches in. And we have no easement to even go there. And most of, most of the probably down by the power, the two ponds are, what's it called? It's, you can't go on it because it's water, it's backup, wetlands, wetlands. So, but you, you at least could get the ditches going in the right direction. I've written the homeowners of those lots that this ditch goes across, asking them permission to have easement on their property. I am now waiting for their reply. I'm now putting a petition through to the neighborhood, getting everybody to sign it. Now, this is something different. This is a different paper, and I haven't yet got everybody to sign this. Then I'll present, when I get these papers signed, I'll present them to you for, for further research. I'm doing everything I can to help our neighborhood save itself from flood, and I would appreciate some help.
We appreciate you being here today, and I would ask you to keep Commissioner Parker engaged.
Yes.
And Stephen?
Yes, sir.
And we'll see what we can't do to help you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here today.
I've got pictures. If you guys want to see the pictures that I sent to Sam Parker. This is my copy.
Are those, do you need, do you need those back?
Yes, sir. This is my copy.
You've sent some to Commissioner Parker, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
So I'll forward those, I'll forward what you sent to the other commissioners.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming this morning. Appreciate the input and the work that you've put into it. Dan, we've got a local mitigation strategy task force meeting later this month. I know in the past, we've encouraged residents to bring these type of concerns to the LMS committee to get them put on the list. We haven't really talked about that in a while at the board level. Can, at our next set of meetings, can we just have a five-minute overview of the LMS and how to get these projects where we have flooding concerns and stormwater problem areas plugged in so that they can work themselves up the ranking and priority order?
Yes, sir.
Of the LMS list?
Yep. We'll add that as a short presentation in the next meeting.
Get some information out there to the public.
Yes, sir.
And kind of refresh all of our memories of how that program works. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. Anyone else? Yes, sir. One more time.
One more.
Yes.
Can, can I advise that you put a committee together? Because the power lines go all over the place, and I'm sure we're not the only neighborhoods that have this situation. So if you had a committee that would investigate all the power lines, I contacted the power company. They, they clean the lines off every four years. That's their policy, and that's what's in their contract with the homeowners. And that's all they come out. But you get a good rain season like we had this year, we got 30 inches of extra rain to deal with. We got erosion. We got very good growing season, but the weeds grow too. And so if we had a committee that would, to help Stephen over there, just help him out and untie his hands on these power lines. It's crazy to have a nice ditch going nowhere, and you can't get in there to maintain it. So that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir. Just so, for clarification, though, a lot of these are just that. They're easements for the power company. The power company has an easement across the place of property I own. That doesn't necessarily mean they have the right to drain water onto it or build a holding pond onto it. So all the easements aren't the same, is I guess what I'm saying.
Okay.
Your idea of a committee, I don't think would bear much fruit because of that. It's, they, you know, they're again, the power company don't own all these properties. They just have the right to run their power.
That's, but our situation is, is many home, like, I wrote six different property owners for one ditch.
Okay. I think Commissioner Lynch's suggestion of getting these complaints and these concerns to the LMS committee would probably suffice rather than standing up another committee.
Well, see, the people, I'm sorry, but the public people don't have, I didn't know this committee was going on today. I just by luck run into it. And most citizens don't know what to do, how to do it, where to do it.
Sir, we advertise all of our meetings in the local papers?
Yes, sir.
And here again, that's one of the reasons you have a district commissioner, Sam Parker. You can always reach out to that commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, just one, one clarif-
Thank you.
Sir, just one clarification. I'm sorry, Commissioner, the $200,000 grants in mind. It is $250 for Baghdad, $250 for Benny Russell, and that is matched with $250 from each of the district commissioners. So there are half-million-dollar projects coming to each of those parks.
Anyone else on public forum? Jerry?
Just clarification on the planning, the zoning meeting tonight. Was that canceled, and can you say why?
The planning and zoning meeting was not canceled. There were two items that were withdrawn.
Right. That's what I meant. I'm sorry.
I do not know why. The items were withdrawn. Our planning and zoning director notified the board and has notified the planning and zoning board members that those two items, R001 and R004, I believe, are the numbers.
Have been removed. So there's still a meeting tonight, but those items are not on there. Okay. I would -- we're in, and I'll wait till Commissioner Parker's here to give the full speech, but we're going to have to watch it in what's going on, not only in Pace, but as mentioned earlier, in the south end of the county. Unbridled growth, we're behind now. I mean, how many horror stories have I heard of people standing here of problems after the fact? And there's always been an attitude of, well, we can't stop them. They can do whatever they want. We're going to have to come to a conclusion and manage the growth in this county a little bit better. I'm not opposed to growth, but I am opposed to uncontrolled, out of control, do whatever you want to. A good friend of mine, for example, and I say this, that we need to make sure that we watch over who's building houses in our county. A well-known builder built a subdivision in Panama City that makes a lot of noise over here, and I will tell you that when they went in and investigated those houses, on the front of the roof, they weren't nailed properly, and most of those houses wouldn't have had damage in them, except the front portions of the roof were pushed in on a gable end. That's the kind of stuff that causes our citizens' heart just tears at them, and it costs them money. And Pace is certainly drowning in water right now, and the south end is having issues. And this commission, you do have the authority to put a bridle on some of this. You do have the authority to slow it down. You do have the authority to make sure that it's done right. And I want you all to -- I think the voices are getting stronger and stronger. I see a lot of activity on social media where people are starting to understand that they -- they're going to start taking an active role in protecting their community. And along with that, and it has been lacking forever, is, and state statute requires it, that you have a representative of the school board on the planning board. They never take advantage of that, as they should. Firehouses, schoolhouses, is all after the fact. Let's build the houses. Let's build it, and they will come. And it's after the fact that the citizens, and I'll give you a prime example of it, is our fire tax. I mean, look at what we just got hit with. We go from $3 million to $6 million in one year because we're not planning ahead. All right? It's -- I understand, I'm a capitalist as they come. I understand, yeah, let's make money. I'm all about it. But at the same time, at the same time, we have to think about the people that are already living here, what problems they incur. I mean, just in the last year or so, I've seen a dozen people come up here with horror stories of their property washing away, all kind of problems. The south end, nor -- it's not just in one place. We have several places. And I just, I plead with this commission and the staff to think about these things for the health of our community. You know, it's fine to say, well, we like growth, it helps growth. Well --
Jerry, your three minutes is about up.
Yeah. Well, we'll discuss that one also at an appropriate time. I just ask that the commission start thinking about these kind of things a little more, to be a little more earnest in the thoughts on that. Because we can't take -- I mean, we're back to hundreds of approvals in new houses.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jerry, it's important to realize also that, and I don't know if we can pull the statistics or how we would get them, but in my district, for example, the vast majority of new development down there is not the subject of a rezoning request. It is property that has been zoned, R1, since zoning was implemented in the county. It is just now being developed. It's not being developed because of action that the board took or because the board allowed the development. This is property that's already zoned, R1, that someone owns and decided to finally put houses on it or a subdivision or what have you. So it's not the case of the board rezoning property to allow developers to build. It's the case of Americans owning property and having property rights and exercising those property rights and doing what they're legally entitled to do. The same thing's happening in the north end of the county. We've probably had more rezonings in the north end, I would imagine, because you have more land up here. You know, we're on a peninsula down there. But still in the north end of the county, I would venture to say that if you look at single-family permits over the last five years, most of them are on property that has never been the subject of a rezoning. It's just, you know, raw land that is zoned, R1, R1A, rural residential, and is finally being built on.
Right. And I don't disagree with the point you're making. There's also in the planning phases where this commission could do a lot of things to help alleviate some of the impact to that. And I just want to make sure that we do everything that we can, i.e. turning lanes. Okay? How many times have I stood here and watched a multimillionaire stand here and argue that he doesn't want to put in a turning lane when you know good and well it's going to be an impact to the community around him? It happens over and over and over. Those are the small things that the commission can also take a part in that will make a difference in lessening the impact to the citizens around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. We do require turning lanes on certain types of projects, and the turning lanes are being put in. Let's keep in mind, too, that 2018, Santa Rosa County has received more than 100 inches of rain. That's eight and a half feet, probably the wettest year on record, and that's something we don't control. Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, we adjourn.